My comments and questions with the caveat of where I'm coming from as a representative of the over 212,363 people that elected me. And coming from a background of I've been on the city when we did our first expansion of Convention Center, the one we have now, and it was very tough. We had to get stayed and we had to get all the folks on board to get it expanded. And that's why we ended up where we are with the Convention Center. And then, once we expanded it, we had the toughest time in Cincinnati history where people were canceling conventions. And even our leadership at the CBB at that time quit and said, I can't sell this place. I'm out. And as the vice mayor, who was not on the payroll of the CBB, but one who had experience in marketing, I decided to get on planes and go myself in the deepest and toughest times to recruit conventions. And when I went there, I got a chance to hear what was the convention saying besides, of course, the other reasons that we were going through the toughest time. And one of them was, well, do you have this much exhibit space? We can't even talk to you unless you get this much exhibit space, this many hotels. And so, I learned a lot about that industry and became very involved in the industry. Came back with conventions, bringing money, not just going and what I think. We brought conventions back. We brought the NAACP here twice. We brought the Shriners Convention that brought a lot of money here, twice. We brought Noble Blacks in Law Enforcement coming here, twice. They were booking the hotels, staying in the rooms. And then, the space, we had activities on Fountain Square. And they said, man, this is different. We don't have this in other cities. And of course, the list goes on and on. And we were able to rebuild our Convention and Visitors Bureau. So my commitment on bringing business, money, revenue, Cincinnati's in Hamilton County, is unmatched. But now, we're getting into the specifics. We're in my industry now. I've been the deputy director of tourism for the entire state of Ohio and had to go to the 88 other counties that have Convention and Visitors Bureaus and market the entire state. And so, as we're moving forward, my only goal is for the taxpayers of Hamilton County, for us to get the best deal. We must get the best deal as possible. We can't move forward at all costs or any cost. The questions have to be asked, and they will be asked. And I will continue to ask those questions. It's just like going to a bank. When you go to the bank and you say, I want to get a loan for my business, they have some questions. When you go to the teller to even get your own money out, they've got, they give them your name, but they got some questions. And if you don't answer the questions, you can't even get your own money. And so, one of the things I wanted to be very clear down here is the way we are going to conduct our business, whether we agree or disagree. I want the three house to be respected. I want Dumens to be respected, and I want the taxpayers of Hamilton County to be respected. And so, that's where the questions come in. And I'm pretty familiar with a lot of these projects. With that, I would ask if you would put on the board, I want to give a picture of where we are as a county. When we make a decisions, we got to make decisions, not as one project, not in one vacuum, but the whole thing. A lot has changed because we had COVID. COVID came after the Millennium Hotel was torn down. And these are just some of the projects that we'll be facing or are facing. And I think we talked about it last week. We can't do everything. And each of these projects wants some type of government help, whether it's a tax credit, a tax abatement, or tax cash, whether it's the general fund or a restricted fund, but it's coming out of a fund of tax money. And that just, I didn't have enough room. It's more to come. And so, we as a county got to make a decision on what's the best use and how do we squeeze the best deal to be able to accomplish progress, but not at the point where the homeowner goes under. Also, in this backdrop, letters just went to every homeowner in Hamilton County mandated by the state of Ohio, not by the county commissioners and not by the county, but by the state of Ohio, where they will be reevaluating properties. And they said it's going to be one of the largest reevaluations going up that may get to your taxes. And so, if we're baiting things and we're going to tax over here and tax over there and a little bit over there, that stuff starts to hit you. And then, you see who is really paying the taxes. The homeowners get squeezed. So, when I ask these questions, we're looking at how do we get to a positive place, but not at the expense of the taxpayers of Hamilton County that are trying to just hang on. So, we could take that down. That's the backdrop of how I come up with all of the questions that I think need to be asked that I've been hearing from the taxpayers. So now, we go to the Convention District. And I wanted to say that I was not here, but I was a taxpayer on the outside looking in. And when Millennium was said it had to go, of course, and it, you know, and let's be clear, the Millennium Hotel was paying property taxes. And I asked them, was they behind on the property taxes? They weren't, because that's the first place you go when you're trying to get a property right out there behind. So, they were, we were bringing in property taxes. Some people were still booking those rooms, even though they want the best rooms, but they were booking some of those rooms. It was an 800-room headquarter hotel. And one of the things that Conventions asked, they don't want five or six hotels. They want a host hotel, and we had 800. So, the thought was, if we get rid of 800, we got to replace 800. And even with the, I pulled this, because when I got here, the World Cup was a big issue. This was the big document that Hamilton County signed, although we didn't get the World Cup, but we signed and said we would commit to everything that's in here. And in here, it has 800 rooms. It has 800 rooms. Hospitality hotel, 800 rooms. And we signed and said, yes. So, what's interesting to me, we didn't get the World Cup, but all of a sudden now, the hotel, which was once a top priority, has now become a secondary priority. And in this, I've been asking these questions. I want to thank you, Mr. Ludo. Finally, I've been asking since December, I think of 2021. You gave us a packet. I'd like to have this packet of questions online, where every taxpayer of Hamilton County can read it and can go along with us. I don't want just, I'm getting a packet and we get in a packet. This needs to be online, where every taxpayer, citizen of Hamilton County can get it. And I'd like to get some copies, so I can get out into the community and see what they think about these answers. I'm concerned about the bait and switch. Hotel was the priority, 800 rooms. What we're going to be voting on or looking to vote on, this resolution you're presenting, Mr. Ludo, has nothing about financing the hotel. It's all about Convention Center. I love our ballroom. Our ballroom is, I mean, I've been all over the country. We got one of the baddest ballrooms in town. Everybody talks about it. We also are the only Convention Center, at least from my knowledge, that even allows African-American minority businesses inside Convention Center to sell food. Taste of Julia's, and I can, I think Scott's BBQ and some others. And that helped us recruit conventions. So, when I look on here and see $200 million, and I'm only getting 12,000 additional square footage, hey, that's a lot. Do you do the math? 212,000 additional square feet, and it's mostly outside. I have a lot of questions and concerns. In this packet of questions that you presented to us, I asked the question about can the 1% that's going for hotel tax go to the hotel? And I think that is a legitimate question. Mr. Ludo, could you answer that question? Why not?
So, the question is, can one, can part of the 1% transient occupancy tax go towards the headquarter hotel project? So, the very first answer to that, I think, is more of an arithmetic or math question. So, with the 1%, with the project at the Duke Energy Convention Center, the needs of that project at 200 million, the full 1% is needed in order to provide the revenue needs to fill the, to fund those bonds. So, mathematically, you couldn't take a part of that 1%, throw it over to the headquarter hotel project and still be able to do the Duke Energy Center project the way it has been scoped. From a legal perspective, I think there's a couple of different issues in not being an attorney, but having spoken with him about this particular concept, I think-
We have one right here.
Attorney. I don't know that Michael has researched this. But what I would say is, I believe the legislation that was passed includes the term hotel within the legislation for the use of the 1%. So, at a very high level, there is the ability to use revenues for the hotel, but there is, I would just caution that there's a lot more legal analysis. There's, there are constitutional issues in terms of the provision of credit to private entities that we would have to cross. So, we would have to, in terms of the answer as to whether the 1% can go, statute permits it broadly, but it would require a very specific analysis of the situation to determine whether it could actually happen in this particular case, especially if everything is going to be privately owned.
Yeah, I would like to get that a legal analysis, because basically what you said, you said it possibly could. And we're not lawyers, and the lawyer's not here, but it could. And my question is, what changed from this document we signed legally binding, saying that we would have an 800-room host hotel in time for World Cup, which I believe would have been here, what, '26? And even in the news, because we, the reason we hurried up and said, we got to hurry up and sign with 3CDC, we got to hurry up and get this going, because we had this that it needed to be signed. And it needed to be signed for the hotel. And then, I believe, one of the quotes was, it's critical to Cincinnati's ongoing FIFA World Cup bid for matches in summer of 2026. Keyword, it's critical. So, how does it now become uncritical? Because in this, all of the things I'm seeing and what we're going to be voting on, we're not, we don't have a financing plan for the hotel. Why is that last? But when we signed this document with World Cup, it was first. How did, that's where I'm, it's hard for me to understand. How are you going to deliver it here by 2026 or 2025? And then, I had something else that said, we were going to be starting on it in '23, and according to this media report. And I'm just trying to figure out, how did all of that change? It said, moving toward building a headquarter hotel by 2025. Quote, without it, it will be nearly impossible for us to host the World Cup. This is just the first step of the process. We must move forward. How did it change? And that was, let me get a date, January 26, 2022. And now, the hotel is kind of taking the back burner. I understand lots have been said that the hotel people said, they're not going to do that unless you beautify the Convention Center. But couldn't we give them a promissory note? That if you come and move forward, we will help do that versus kind of what we're doing the opposite. They're giving us a verbal promise that they're going to do the hotel if we spend $200 million. What changed?
So, I'll just answer that briefly, Commissioner. I don't, I don't think anything has necessarily changed. I think the headquarter hotel and the Convention District or the Convention Center have always been linked very tightly together. They're synergistic with each other. The, you're correct, the hoteliers or the developers, I should say, not necessarily hoteliers, developers that came in who pitched the idea of developing headquarter hotel, each and every one of them that we interviewed indicated separately that their proposal was contingent upon some type of a renovation of the Duke Energy Convention Center, not necessarily, and we asked very specifically whether that included a full expansion of the center or whether it was a renovation. And all of them were very clear that, distinct from a full expansion, although everyone said, well, sure, if you can expand it, that's fantastic, but it at least needs to be renovated because it is deteriorating rapidly. As we went through in some of the presentation, the-
At that point, but could we have given them a promissory note like they're giving us a promis, they're not even giving us a promissory note? Could we have said, hey, if you get this hotel going, we will put in writing, it will be, you know, binded, go get the notary, we will do this if you get this going. Why is it, we got to get going and we don't have anything? We don't have a notarized piece of paper for it.
So, I'd answer that in a couple of ways, just to put a finer point on the issue of the developers, because it speaks directly to Portman. Portman was, of all the developers, the one that was most specific about that issue. And they, it said that their occupancy projections were based in, in large part on the renovation of the hotel and that had the, I'm sorry, renovation of the Convention Center. If the renovation didn't happen, their occupancy projections for their hotel would drop by 20 to 24%. So, it wasn't, I just want to be clear, especially for the public, Commissioner, that it wasn't just people saying very high level, oh yeah, please build a Convention Center. They were very specific about how their projections related into this. Now, to your question about a promissory note-
Or a legal document to say, hey, if you sign with us and you get going with this hotel, we'll get going with the beautification versus now, we're doing this and we don't have anything notarized saying that we're going to get an 800 hotel. We have nothing notarized in this document, even what we're voting on. We're going to hotel occupancy, occupancy tax, there's still no real financial plan on the hotel. And that is, that troubles me.
So, a couple of things to your questions, and they're good questions. I think that the idea of a promissory note would entail that both, both sides at that point were willing to say, I will do this for this. And until all of the terms of that hotel were negotiated, I don't even think the hotel would want, want to have had us sign a promissory note for something that they weren't committed yet with interest rate costs and local construction costs to say specifically, here's exactly what we're going to do. That was the purpose of the negotiation process. I would say, though, that irrespective of that point, that the Convention Center, and I don't want to downplay this, the board, the county, the city, everyone has been very clear that the hotel is the number one priority. That being said, we know that these things are inextricably linked with each other. The headquarter hotel and the ability to use that hotel to drive business into the Convention Center. The Convention Center, given its shape, needs to be repaired as well. So, I think that the, part of the answer to your question, Commissioner, I think would be that irrespective of whether we had a deal with Portman today, tomorrow, or whether we were still yet to do an RFP process, the absent renovation of the Convention Center, I do not think that a hotel would come. And we would, and I think even our consultant, Convention Sports and Leisure remarked this even a couple of years ago, where he said, if you do not do a renovation of the Convention Center soon, let alone expansion, you are essentially writing yourselves out of the citywide convention business, because other communities will pass you by, you're not going to continue to get these groups. And then, once you've lost these big conventions, you've lost them for good.
We understand that, but we're losing them anyway, because if you don't have, if you're closing down for 18 months, you're losing business already. And the fact that a lot of people aren't coming if you don't have a headquarters hotel. What I'm trying to do is, whatever we verbally say to the citizens, because the taxpayers feel like we keep getting screwed. We were told when we went with the two stadiums, we were told one thing, we got 30%. It was not in writing. We didn't get it. Always, when it comes to the taxpayers, what we, what they're interested in, we're always cutting back. I'm trying to put an end to it. Whatever we told the taxpayers, if we said we're taking down 800 rooms, we're going to replace with 800 rooms, I need a notarized, just like this document here, that says Development Management Services Agreement, but there's no guarantees on the hotel, but everything else is in here. Cost overruns is in here. I mean, there's a section that deals with cost overruns, management fee of $1 million. Everything is in this document except the hotel. The hotel is, we going to get around to it. And everybody knows, whatever comes in last, it's not enough money left over. So, I don't want to get a new funding model, and we spend up everything we have in the Convention Facilities Authority or the TOT, as you call it. We spend everything up, because we're, I got to vote on it before I even have a funding plan for the hotel. You're asking us to vote next week, and we don't even have this yet. And then, we voted for the Wex Garage. We've got a garage before we even got a hotel. And we said we needed the garage for a hotel. We're putting up $1.9 million in guarantee for a garage that's going to be functioning before a hotel has even broke any ground. And I'm just saying, we just can't do that. I'm trying to change the trajectory. Whatever we tell the taxpayers, they need it in writing, just like a business needs it in writing. And that's what I'm concerned about in this. We're going to move forward, use up all that money that we got, resource, and then, we're saying the hotel is built on, the hotel financial model is built on a deck of cards. We don't have no notarized, I want something notarized to the people that we going to get 800 rooms. And even in your report, you give yourself wiggle room that you say that, that we may not get 800 rooms. So, when it was advertised, I don't know if it's 17, 18, or what have you, it was 800. You lose 800, you going to get back 800. And to say, well, we don't need 800 now, to pay more and get less? I don't think that makes us competitive. The other thing, I want to get back on the exhibit hall space. You have on here, I have, the question was, why is a broader expansion of the Convention Center not planned as part of this project? A lot is about an outdoor space, and we have three seats on here. So, we got a winter, and we got a fall. And so, some of that time, we won't be able to use, and we do have Fountain Square down the street that has excellent programming. You said, available resources do not yet support a broader expansion of the exhibit hall. That's where we make the extra money, the exhibit hall. That's how we get the bigger conventions. Some people will not even allow us to bid if we don't have so much space. So, now, we're coming in with the exact same number. You said that resources do not support it, while the further expansion may be desirable in the future. So, we'd be right back here where we are now, talking about what can we do? It is first necessary, you said, to modernize the space. And then, you went on to talk about, we have to then try to go back and find some more money. Now, when we come in and do these deals, we're talking right now, Millennium Hotel and the $55 billion debt. When we do these debts and these things, we don't just get extra money, we'll have a new debt and still don't get an expansion. I guess my question is, which I know is hard for the state, because it was hard for us to get the first expansion, when do you see us getting an expansion? With that Millennium site that we paid $55 million on, and we're just going to have it as free space?
Yes, so I can't predict right now when the, when the current occupancy tax fund and that model will support an expansion. I think it's going to depend upon a lot of things, including which direction we go on the expansion. As Commissioner Driouse mentioned, there are some different options that may be open to us in a couple of years that are currently not open. So, I can't right now tell you what, when that model is going to allow for an expansion of the exhibit hall. But what I can tell you, and I just want to make very clear, is that we are talking, I think, in a similar vein, we are talking about ensuring that through a renovation of the Convention Center and the attraction of a headquarter hotel, the ability to continue to drive an increase in that occupancy tax and to get additional conventions. So, I want to be very clear, this is not about doing an expansion and then getting less business. We've spoken with consultants who are doing this in communities across the country, we've spoken with our local convention officials, and we feel very strongly that the types of improvements that we're talking about in this center and the desirability of those improvements to convention goers and meeting planners, together with the hotel, are the things that will drive the existing book of business into that building and will continue to drive additional groups to Cincinnati. I know for a fact that we've had conversations with numerous groups who have told us one thing, and that is, we are not yet ready to select Cincinnati. We will select Cincinnati when we see an improvement in your Convention Center, which is currently a, it's been called many things, but a dog in the market, and that we get in a, a new headquarter hotel. So, I think, just want to be clear, we're talking about not dropping in business, but making sure that we can continue to drive business into the community through these improvements that we currently have resources to afford.
On here, you also talk about the business we already have. And I don't want to be disrespectful to the conventions that have come and the people who have booked our convention centers, because their, their business is important as well. You said that we would have some relocating cost of $131,000. Is that the number, or is that estimated?
No, those are actual numbers provided by Visit Cincy. Yes.
And then, who's paying for them to be relocated?
Those are costs that the city of Cincinnati incurs.
And then, also, in the section of cost overruns, who does that fall under? I send this, is listed in what the county signed on-
You're talking about in terms of the development.
Development, yes, the development.
Yeah, cost overruns, I believe in that agreement are, I think, the way it's worded is that the city, county, 3CDC will mutually discuss cost overruns if and when they happen. And to the degree they do happen, that a new financing plan will be put into, into place to cover that. But there was specific, so it was, it was a bit vague in terms of how it would be covered, but it does say specifically that consideration would be given to the fact that this is a city-owned facility in terms of the covering of any cost overrun. So, from my perspective, if we have a cost overrun, which we all hope that we will not, but if the project does experience a cost overrun, we put together a financing plan to see how we can, how we can cover that, how, and some of that could involve some technical considerations in terms of the financing that we're doing. But at the same time, we've acknowledged in that document that, at the end of the day, this is a city facility. And that would play a strong role in terms of how we go about closing that gap.
Yeah, I appreciate, because the language does not. It includes us as equal partners under the cost overrun section.
Equal part-
I mean, our name is equal. It doesn't say it's going to fall on the city.
Except that it does reference the city as the owner of the facility that can be considered in the, in that plan.
Yeah, I didn't know why we were mentioned, if, why would we be mentioned in the cost overruns? Also, you mentioned a $3 million Visit Cincy would put in to this project. Talk about that.
So, Visit Cincy has, so it's a little bit complicated. So, there are multiple streams of occupancy taxes. The city levies their own occupancy tax, the county leverages a 3.5% occupancy tax to, that goes to fund the debt service on the Duke Energy Convention Center, it goes to fund the debt service on the Millennium Hotel. It also, at the end, ultimately goes to fund some of the debt service on the Sharonville Convention Center. So, you've got that occupancy tax, and there's a separate 3% occupancy tax that is levied by the county for, for Visit Cincy, that it applies countywide and is specifically under Ohio law levy to, for the purpose of the operation of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, or here known locally as Visit Cincy. That produces somewhere between $8 and $9 million a year. That is the primary operating budget for Visit Cincy. That's what they use to go out and make sure that they're attracting business to come to the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County, to fill the convention centers and to fill the hotels. Visit Cincy, because, and this is just a little bit about the dynamic of convention and tourism markets, there's constantly this friction between, what do you do? Do you build and maintain the box where these things are going to go, or do you market it? And the two have to play off each other. I think Visit Cincy has realized that at this point in time, we're at a critical juncture and that there needs to be more effort put into, into making sure the box, the convention center is something where people want to come to. So, they've agreed to put $3 million of that $8 to $9 million annual 3% tax to debt service support for the financing that we're going to do. So, that money is going to be there. The growth model that we've outlined shows that, and we've talked with Visit Cincy about this, that to the degree the growth performs as we think it will, that we will do what this, that to the degree the growth performs as we think it will, that we will do what we can in the residual to get them back as much as they, as as we can to make them whole, so that they continue to, can continue to market the the community moving forward. They put themselves at risk by doing it because there is no guarantee that that will in fact occur. I will also say that Visit Cincy has historically received from the the county a one million dollar additional grant for marketing, which, under this scenario, that does not contemplate. So they've got some risk in the game, they've got some skin in the game, but I think they realize that it's necessary in order to make sure this project happens. So I hope that answered your question, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was looking at your answer on here. I just want to make sure, because when you say they're going to put in three million, basically, the hotel tax comes to this fund, and we're a pass through of the tax dollars to Visit Cincy, similar to what kind of, yeah, kind of like what sorta, when they put a tax on or whatever, it's taxed, it goes to there. But I was just concerned when you said that we would, they're going to put up three million. So is it like a loan? Because you had on here that you're going to give back them the three million dollars. And that kind of alarmed me, because when I first heard, I said, oh, they're going to put up three million dollars. But you're saying that the three million will be repaid back by the county or whatever through our hotel motel tax. So is it is it more of a loan or or what, a loan without interest?
Well, not sure I exactly call it a loan, but I see what you're saying, and I would understand why you would term it that way.
Yeah, it's like me saying, I'm gonna give you fifty dollars, and then you get up and say, Lisa, I'm gonna give you fifty dollars.
Right.
But I need the fifty dollars back.
Yeah, so this all gets to, from a municipal finance perspective, the amount of revenue support that we would need to issue bonds in this amount. And the 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 bond purchasers are not going to purchase those bonds unless they see that the revenue support is there to make sure that they're going to get their payments on time and and regularly. So this is, I would put this kind of in a have your cake and eat it too scenario, so that we want Visit Cincy to market and sell the heck out of this community. We want them to keep doing it, we want them to have the resources to do it. Visit Cincy has said, but we know that we can't market a dog. So we're going to put three million dollars into this system. The hope is, is that the revenues produce strongly enough that, at the end, we can turn around and give that money back, so they can go out and do the good work of marketing this out into the community and get more people in to fill the box. So loan, loaning it to the project, however you want to term it, but I would say it's also something that's at risk, because if the revenues don't perform, then the money doesn't, can't come back.
Right. Well, that's like a loan. If you, you're taking a risk when you give somebody a loan.
You do.
Hope they can pay you back. But I just think it needs to be identified differently, so that folks understand what's really transpiring. The last thing is, with the hotel not going on the Millennium site, and I'm still concerned of us having a fifty-five million dollar debt there and not making any money off of it. We don't make any money back off of it. People say, well, you're going to get the hotel. I'm getting hotel now, and I ain't got to put up fifty-five million dollars. Other hotels, I'm getting their tax now. So we're not getting anything really extra. But the hotel where it's going to be located, who owns that particular property?
That's owned by the port right now, with, there's some operational relationship with 3CDC there as well.
Okay. So I'm gonna just hit this part, and I'm very, I know people get dicey about it, and they shouldn't get dicey, because we collect taxes from diverse people. Some of our biggest conventions that came here are African-American conventions that came to this to this county and spent money and continue, I hope, to come to the county and spend money. But in twenty eight, twenty nineteen, there was some concern with having equity on the hotel. And the port authority was challenged on that, and that was in twenty nineteen. But I think the statement holds kind of true today. The question was, couldn't there be ownership? In over the Rhine and a lot of places downtown, there is no lack ownership of buildings. They're renting, and if people go up on the rent, they'll wipe them out. We've got an issue right now over in Avondale, on Burnett Avenue. They came in when the Jewish hospital got bought. Oh, we're going to be here, we're going to do this. And now the last standing black doctor, Dr. Melvin, the eye doctor, is being rushed out because they want to double his rent, and he'll be out. And then there'll be no African-Americans. What, so ownership is important. The thought, I guess, was raised by, at that time, the African-American Chamber and some other black businesses. And in a statement, it read, in a statement, Port CEO Laura Bruner, this was in the Courier, said, there will be no equity in the hotel from the private sector because the current plans call for the port, calls for the port, who will own it and issue the tax-exempt bonds sold to pay for it. And I brought this up, and she said, because that, they got strict rules. And so I had some concerns, and that's why I said, well, maybe we should be over on the Millennium side, but if they own both of them. So with this statement, I'm going to ask you, and I'm not talking about the fifteen percent, and, oh, I'm talking about ownership of the land, because we've been giving land out for one dollar. This concerned me, this statement. This statement, there will be no equity in the hotel from the private sector, even though Portman is from out of town, and I know they're diverse. I'm talking about ownership of the actual land, because the current plans call for the port to own it and issue the tax-exempt bonds to pay for it. Has that changed?
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll have to follow up on that one for you. I don't know precisely on that. I do know that when the, when the discussions immediately or initially occurred with the developer on this, that there were efforts to make sure that there was contacts made between the selected developer and minority interests, business interests in the community, specifically to talk about equity positions in in the project, et cetera. But I don't know specifically, I don't know the article referenced, so I'll have to look at that, but I'm happy to follow up with you more on it.
Yeah, and it's about land ownership. So I wanted to get answer to those questions. Now, these questions you gave us, I like to see, can this go up on a website where people can?
Certainly, yeah, certainly.
We can get that up quickly. You said it's a moving, a life, breathing document, a lot of moving parts. And the reason I was asking about this hotel motel tax is because, as we are looking at the the Paycor Stadium and the Bengals lease, I believe it was Tennessee, part of their funding model came out of the hotel motel taxes. It's, I mean, it's true, we had a lot of fans in town, people were in hotels, the Bengals brought people to town. But Tennessee, part of their diverse, because we're going to have to look at some diverse funding models, we're trying to take it off the backs of just the taxpayers. And I wanted to make sure that we're not taking this and putting it all on this one thing, convention center, and now we got a hotel, no money, we got to find something else. We got a Bengals stadium and a contract lease, we try to diversify that model, take, you know, ninety-six percent of the the cost is on the taxpayers, we're trying to look for creative ways. But now, when I say, let's go to that fund, don't touch that fund, we done used it all up. That's why I'm asking these questions, to give us the most flexibility. I want the best deal for the taxpayers, and I don't want a bait and switch. If we say we doing eight hundred, I need it notarized that we're going to do eight hundred, and we got to work our butts off to get to eight hundred rooms, not having it subjective. Well, it's eight hundred a day, and oh, at the end, we just ran out of money, we just can't do it, because the whole deal with this came about from a headquarters hotel. That's how it all got started. And I don't understand how the hotel is, today, we don't have a funding plan, and you're asking me to vote on a resolution of a funding plan on, I guess, in a week, and I don't have that the hotel is, has, I don't have nothing notarized for the taxpayers to say that they will definitely get what we had told them we were going to get. So that's, those are my concerns, and I hope we can get this on the website and you can update it.
A couple of quick things on that. One, on that, we'll definitely get that up on the website. Number two, I'll get you an answer on the minority equity position issue. I believe that that 3CDC and Portman are currently talking to some minority interests from an equity perspective as well. So I'll confirm that and get some information back to you on that. And then, let's see, the the.
That one is tied to the land, is that, that's what she was referring to, that they can't be with the land, we want the land.
And I'm sorry, your your final question.
My final was.
It was on the hotel, I'm sorry. And just just a quick comment on that, just to say that, in terms of, you know, a guarantee notary on on the hotel eight hundred rooms, what I what I would say is, as 3CDC continues the negotiation of this, that it could very well be that the final package delivered to the county and city is one that says, if you want eight hundred rooms, here's what it means, and here's the number of committable rooms they're willing to provide, here's the amount of meeting space they're willing to provide, here's the amount of amenities they're willing to provide, or if you want, and I'm just making these numbers up, so apologies, if you want seven hundred and seventy-five rooms at this number of committable rooms and and these amenities, and this is the gap for that, and the county and the city have the chance to decide amongst that. So it could be that it's a a a decision that ultimately we have to weigh in on with our partners like Visit Cincy and others to determine, is the product that we're being offered for the price we're going to pay what we want in this community? I think everyone wants eight hundred rooms. At the end of the day, if there is another product that's brought to us that, in some way, shape, or form, makes up for the fact that it's not eight hundred, but it's seven eighty or whatever the number is, I think that's something that the board would at least want to consider and make a judgment as to, yeah, that that sounds good, or no, we want to, we want the eight hundred, I mean, whatever, whatever it is. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, this is not about, oh, we want, I'm going to the shopping center, and I, oh, I just really want that dress, and I want, no, this is what we promised the taxpayers. This is what we said when we were tearing down, that we would build right back up. And we were also said, it's in the paper, they said that in this meeting, it was said we were going to get the hotel started in twenty twenty-three, we're in twenty twenty-three. We told the World Cup, we would, we signed this document, we would have it ready to go with eight hundred rooms. So I don't want to demy it down like, oh, it's just what you want. No, what I want is a full package. You're piecemealing it to me. You're giving me over here for Cabbage Center, let's move forward, let's move forward, and over here, well, the hotel, we'll get around to it. Give me the whole package, and let's do it at one time. Why we got to do it piecemeal? Let's do it at one time. That way, we can look at the whole picture. And that's what I've been saying, but every, you know, couple months is, okay, I need you to finance the garage, a garage without having a hotel. But the garage is up, and we don't make no money over it. I need you to guarantee one point nine million dollars, and we don't even get the interest or ownership of it. Okay, over here, I need you to get fifteen million dollars that we can get going with the development of the look of the Cabbage Center. We did fifteen million dollars. Now it's over here, we need the one percent, and it's going to our Cabbage Center. Well, you haven't brought me one thing, going to the hotel. I'm saying, bring it all at one time. This is not a, oh, you know, a luxury thing, this is a business thing. And I'm just saying, if we told the people eight hundred, that's why I wanted a notary. Nobody wants to put it in writing, you don't want to put it in this, in this document that's binding. We did, you know, we don't want to have it in no document that's binding, so we can keep going back and forth. Well, well, I'm not for no bait and switch. If we tell the taxpayer what something's going to be, it's time for the taxpayers to get something notarized. It's time for them to get a contract that's binding. It's time for them, everything else is binding except something for the taxpayers. We can't get thirty percent rebate because we didn't get it in a binding document, but everything that's needed for the stadium is in a binding document, we got to do it. I don't want to make that mistake again. So that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking, and these are the questions that I'm getting from people in the streets, people who are part of organizations that bring conventions, and someone like myself who has brought conventions. We have nothing, the taxpayers have nothing about the hotel. It's a bait and switch, and I wanted, if you're going to do it, just put it, put it in here like everything else, and let's vote on it at one time. That's what I'm trying to do. Let's vote on one time that everybody knows what it is, it's above board, and we're ready to go. If it was urgent for World Cup, and, you know, they don't even live here in Hamilton County, then we should be urgent when the taxpayers ask you, can we, can we get it? So that's all. And we wouldn't have questions. If it was a binding document, I wouldn't have no questions. I would be able to go right in here like you got cost overruns, right in here like you got a development fee, right in here like you got a resolution for one percent. And that's the questions that I that I have. But thank you, I hope you put this on the website, this is helpful, I've been asking for this, and everybody can follow along, but I'm trying to move to a notarized document on what we're going to get with the hotel and when we're going to get a hotel, because you can have a convention center, but if you don't have a host hotel, you're not getting the big conventions either. And if it's smaller, but more money, you still will be missing out on conventions. If you don't have the exhibit space, you still will be getting beat out by these other surrounding areas. And so that's why I'm asking these questions, and will continue to do so. And I think all of us are working, and I, my goal is the best deal for the taxpayers. So this resolution, is this coming up on Thursday, or?
No, this, the resolution is.
Or next week.
Is, it's not currently on the agenda, but the recommendation would be, and the idea here is that we want to produce enough revenues over a significant, over a, over a number of months to be able to credibly use the revenue source when we do the financing, and so that the rating agencies can see the history of the production of this revenue, and it's not something that is subject to approval in the future. So putting it in place now, we've recommended November first, that it would be, that would go into place, into effect, which we've suggested October fifth, simply to provide the hotel years with sufficient time and to be transparent with them that this is coming. We didn't want to do something late October and say that this is effective November first. So to answer your question, Commissioner, it would, presuming the board concurs, it would be on the agenda for October the fifth.
Vice President Dreyhouse.
Thank you.